Well, that's right. He's something.
Good evening and welcome. My name is Adam Block. I'm the Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I find all of our members are present. So I call this meeting of May 14 to order. This meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. All documents and materials for this meeting are available at the town's website, which is needhamma.gov. Also present with us tonight are staff members Lee Newman and Alex Clea. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing for an amendment to major project site plan special permit number 2007-10 with the Beth Israel Deaconese Hospital in Needham as a petitioner for the property located at 148 Chestnut Street to construct a temporary addition, which we'll talk about. So I'm going to say everyone from the hospital, come on up. And while you guys need a minute to get set up, I'm going to ask for a motion to waive the reading of the notice of hearing.
I move that we waive the reading of the notice of hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by Paul, a second by Artie. Any discussion? I'll come to the vote. We're all present, so it'll be a voice vote. All in favor, please take a public saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carried unanimously. With us tonight, I understand, we understand that Evans Hewer is your attorney and that he's out of state.
On vacation.
Exactly. So I promise that we'll give you the same respect that we give him.
That could then be in trouble.
And I believe also with us tonight, Dr. Greg McSweeney, who's Senior Vice President of the hospital, and Chief Medical Officer of the hospital. Excuse me, Justin Moska from VHB, who we've had with us before, John Fowler over there. We've had before, you're the architect, right? Project architect with Margulies and Proust.
Yep.
And then Michael Kluckman.
That's you?
That's you?
Yes.
All right. And you are a landscape architect.
Right.
And...
My name's Will Bradford. I'm the Director of Finance at the hospital. And there was a bit of a change in command from the leadership team when it comes to facilities mid-project. So Greg and I, I won't be presenting at all. Greg will be doing the presentation, but I figured I wanted to see it through to completion.
You're here for moral support.
Here for moral support.
Yeah, but you're the money guy, so you're the...
So for the, just before you get going, I'm going to read into the record the correspondence that we've received. We haven't received any correspondence from any butter or any neighbor or any other resident in town. We've received comments from our town department, which is part of the process when you apply for a site plan review special permit or an amendment to a special permit. So we have received, by memo dated April 8 from the Design Review Board approving the hospital's modifications, by email dated April 16 from Ed Olson, who is our, who's the Director of Parks and Forestry, who has a couple of comments. On the one hand, he said there's no issues with this particular application. However, he did say that the hospital hasn't really completed the landscape improvements from several years ago. And, and that some of the landscaping has become a bit of an eyesore and is requesting that we encourage the hospital to revisit that landscape plan. So we're going to have some comments about that tonight. By email dated April 17 from our Building Commissioner, Joe Prondak, citing no issues on zoning, yet also has identified some building code compliance questions, which we're going to get into. One is there needs to be on the site plan, something that clearly shows that you're not impeding an exiting egress in the facilities. So we'll want to, you know, look closely tonight at the, at the site plan. And then a provision for ability access by ramp or mechanical chairlift for anyone that may need it for the temporary imaging structure. And then if it's connected, and it did look like it's connected through that temporary enclosure, that there's actually a fire sprinkler protection system installed. So I don't know if that's part of the plan, but we'll come to that. By email dated April 18 from Fire Chief Tom Conroy with no issues. By email dated May 6 from Tara Gurge, our Assistant Public Health Director, and she has the following comments. One, that any exterior lighting on the temporary addition, that there's no light trespass for neighbors. And if there is a generator, that the generator is muffled somehow to reduce, you know, any noise disturbance to neighbors. And then if there is a bathroom in a hand washing facility to be, that's provided in the trailer or the enclosure, that there has to be a regularly scheduled pump out process. We also received an email dated May 8 from the Town Engineer, Tom Rider, with no comment or objection. Lee and Alex, I don't see anything in the file unless I missed it from, from the Chief Schlittler from the Police Department. So if we close the hearing tonight, maybe we'll save it for, you know, any additional comment from Chief Schlittler if he has any comments. So with that, I'll turn it over to any one of you folks who would like to lead the presentation.
I can start.
All right. Thank you, Justin.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you noted, right, we're here to amend existing special permit. I'll let you go through all the legal stuff with our fearless legal leader missing and abroad.
Yes.
But essentially, the project is going to be, there's a renovation of the imaging suite in the hospital going on that a trailer needs to be brought in so that they can continue doing the imaging. And Greg will talk about it in a minute. While that area is being renovated, when the renovation is complete, the trailer goes away and the site goes back to being what it was. And we'll, you'll see on the site plan shortly that there are a few minor site modifications we need to make to be able to get the trailer in and then to get it out again. So what we're doing is temporarily disturbing what's out there and then, yes.
Two, for one second. I'm sorry, Justin.
Yeah.
Are we able to bring up the site plan?
We will, yeah. We're going to run through that. This is a quick, quick verbal overview and then we'll go through everything.
Got it.
But just, just to give you a sense of what, what the project is. And so then when the trailer's gone, we're bringing landscaping back in. We're bringing it back up to what, what it's going to be. So I'll turn it over, Greg. He'll talk about sort of the why, and then we'll go through the site plan.
Can I just get the share screen up?
Oh, yeah.
How do I share screen?
Alex, do you need to provide permission?
Yes, I sent it earlier.
Join as panelists?
Yeah. There you go.
So, go ahead.
We're glad, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, the entire committee, for this opportunity to present before you to present the medical case for this. We'll be getting the details from these gentlemen. So the hospital, undoubtedly, if you've been around BID and all, you've seen the growth that we've experienced particularly since COVID and shortly before COVID, frankly, it started picking up. And it really, similar to many hospitals throughout the state, the demand for medical services is huge throughout, both in the community, emergency department, and in the hospital. So we've experienced, just in our emergency department, probably over the past five years, in excess of 10,000 additional annual visits per year. So we, you know, can remember not that long ago, we had 14,000 visits per year for our emergency department. We're exceeding 26,000 this year. So it is, is quite dramatic. Also, I'd just say that we have a strong primary care network. We're part of the BIH systems who have a lot of demand from community patients, frankly, in terms of our, demand for our service. And in addition to that, we're running a full function, full service hospital for inpatients. So the demand for radiology services is very high from all of those different, different areas. And in our planning for, you know, ongoing services, we've identified this one camera in the radiology department that's reached the end of its functional life, and we're looking to replace that with a more state-of-the-art piece of equipment that actually gives more clinical information than the current one we have. Various options for replacement were looked at, including, you know, leaving in place and have the department run around it while construction was being done and do it in phases. And the decision was that more efficient, least impact on our radiology department would be actually to get the trailer, provide the diagnostic equipment that we'll be, we're looking to replace in the trailer. So that leads us to, to being here this evening and request this approval.
Thank you.
Want to bring up the site plan?
No, through.
Actually, it would be easier if I just didn't computer from it. Because I can actually just stand around. So starting, this is all, again, on the Lincoln Street side. This is the former ED entrance, I believe. Right? So this is the same location where the trailer's been brought in in the past. What you'll see on this plan, and it's actually kind of hard, but so I'll trace it with my mouse here, there's an existing canopy.
Yes.
That's out here. It goes to about here and then comes back in. It's a dash line. It's a little hard to see on the screen. So that canopy would be coming down temporarily. It would get, get, come down and get stored. There's an existing concrete wall that's right along that same edge of the canopy. That concrete wall will be in the way of the trailer, so that's planned to go away. They're going to cut that below grade and remove. Similarly, there's concrete walls that come along both sides of the entrance and the concrete walk. Those would be getting trimmed back, so those get cut down below grade, just along the most of it, and then saw cut right by east and west of either side of the entrance. And then the trailer comes in, and if I go down to the next plan, what we're planning to do so that it's, you know, not unsightly conditioned while the trailer is there, is actually put most of our landscaping in at this time. So we're going to be disturbing stuff to get the trailer in, putting the landscape in. And then when the trailer leaves, there's actually just a little bit, so you'll see everything's kind of grayed out now. The only thing we're not putting back, there's a tree that has to come down to get the tractor out. So we figured it would be kind of inefficient to put a tree and cut it down and remove it again. So that, that tree is the only thing that's not going back in during the temporary condition. Other than that, the landscaping will go in. If any of the shrubs have to be removed, those are easier to temporarily dig up and replace. So we'll, we'll do that or we'll replace them as necessary if they, if they can't survive. But ultimately, the, the proposed condition for landscaping, the future condition, is going to look very much like the interim condition that you see on, on this plan here. So that includes removing a lot of what's kind of overgrown and a little unsightly now, some landscaping that, that's kind of gotten away. So we're going to clear that island out, actually redo it as a new landscape island. And then the pieces of the wall that are, that are to remain, that's more just actually for, to make it a little more geometric, because the one on the left here has to stay. There's a very slight grade difference between that walkway and there's an area way against the building. We wanted to get rid of the walls completely. We thought that would be a little more aesthetic, but since we can't, we also didn't want to just keep one. We have to keep it. So what we're doing is making it geometric and putting the walls on, on both sides. Other than that, it's going to look, again, the landscaping will be cleaned up, but whenever, when the trailer leaves, the, the canopy gets put back up. The landscaping is complete and it's very similar to what's out there today, just with, with improved landscaping. Do you want to run through the, this is, where'd they go? Maybe just go to zoom. Maybe it's off the page. There it is.
Yep. So just some photographs and renderings of the existing conditions and kind of walking through the proposal. So this is the existing conditions today, the, the existing canopy that'll be taken down. You can see here that concrete wall that's pretty high, pretty unsightly, so that'll just come down permanently. And you can see the lower concrete walls on each side of the driveway that'll be cut back almost in the entirety up to about a few feet from the edge. Cut back and removed?
Yep.
And not returned?
Not returned. Yeah, the walls will stay out.
Just cut down and removed?
They're, they're not actually, they're not retaining walls. They're just, I guess, landscape walls. I don't even, not even seat walls. I don't know what you'd call them. Knee walls?
So those will be taken out on both sides as well as the wall at the island here. This is an image of what the trailer looks like. So you can see there's a portion of the trailer that pops out to make the interior bigger after it's in place in order for the imaging. There's a stair that comes up and then there's a lift. So that's how you get accessibility into the trailer. That answers one of the questions that came up about accessibility. The lift comes down to pick up patients that would be in a wheelchair and brings them up to the level of the trailer. This is an overhead image, so we're essentially creating a connector from the building to the trailer location. That's kind of in a Z configuration. The entrance doors to the building are over here. We come out this way and then over to encapsulate both of those entrances, the stair and the lift entrance with this connector. What's inside?
Like a vestibule?
Yeah, you can go to the next one if you want to. I think it shows.
You'll see in the...
Okay.
What's inside that, between the hospital and the trailer? Yeah, we have an interior, we have an interior shot in a second. You'll see. Oh, great. Yep, that's fine. There's some doors that'll be in the connector to allow egress out of that.
Which I think answers one of the other questions in the building inspector.
But actually, the building egress will be redirected through an exit stair that's adjacent to this building exit. So we did the exit calculations. There's a, an exit stair adjacent to this building exit that will be undisturbed by this, so it's right over here. There are stairs. Is that not an accessibility? You don't have to take the stairs. So the stairs come down. There's a door on both sides of the stair and you can just cut through the stairwell to exit out of the building. You don't have to use the stairs to get out.
It's just the egress.
Actually, I don't have that planned in here.
So if anybody that would have been exiting through the old emergency department doors, it's the same level. You could go out the doorway and straight out.
But then you also have the exit out of this, this portion of the connector through these doors as well, as part of the egress out of, out of that.
So the first floor of the building is at gray level?
Yep.
So that's why, because this is taller, it's at a higher elevation, the, the trailer, that's why you have the lift? You couldn't connect it directly?
Yeah, you would need, yeah, unless you had like a loaded dock or something.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
There weren't stairs on the outside of the building so that it could be at the same level.
Yep.
Okay.
May I ask you just a quick question? We'll move forward. Where is the egress? Where is the, where is the exit? I don't see, is, I've visited that many times in my years. Where is, where is the egress?
The stair?
Yeah, you mentioned it right now. I do not see it.
It's here in plan.
Yeah, I, I don't actually have that. Do you have that, do you have that interior plan?
I have the site plans. I don't think I have yours.
It's right there. It's right under the canopy.
But there also is, in the plan itself, that's the door into the canopy area, into the, into the... I just didn't have, put them into the slide deck.
And then this is the egress.
L 101.
Does that sound like they, does that sound like they weren't egressing through?
Plan L 101. Everyone in class, bring it up.
My understanding is that the main exit and the stair both come out into this vestibule to be able to egress out. Is that correct?
Is it this one here?
This, the stairs aren't in the vestibule.
This comes out. You go through the vestibule, but you end up in this new vestibule to get out.
Oh. Meaning the lift and the stairs coming out of the trailer? Is that what you mean?
No, no. Out of the building, so out of the building, there's the door that's easily, the main egress that's easily seen.
And, and the stair.
Then there's a stair doorway that looks like they both go into the vestibule. Are you saying one of them doesn't?
No, no, no. They both, well, they both go out onto, onto the sidewalk. But you're, you're putting a vestibule there now, or you're putting a, an object between the trailer and the building now, and that is acting like a vestibule?
Correct. The...
Yes. So that's the new entrance and exit.
You can see this is, this is inside the, this is probably, here's the existing hospital. It's like, yeah.
That's exactly right.
So, and then you basically go out into the left.
So that's the only entrance and exit is through, other than through the hospital?
So that temporary...
Is through them.
Building between the trailer and the building is the new entrance and exit.
Except when you're not, except...
Exit only, I think, though.
Or exit only.
Are there like ISL, I mean, are you going to be interim life safety? Are you going to exit side it?
You see this door right here? That, that door is the other exit that goes through the stairwell. And the enclosure will not obstruct that door, so you can still exit the building. And it won't be, it won't be obstructed by the...
And it will still be, like, you'll have the red exit signs above it.
Yes, and we're going to, we're going to take the exits, there's, we'll take the exit sign that's over the, that goes to these double doors over here temporarily down.
Yep.
And have the sign over the exit stair.
You may have to have, I mean, you can check with the bill, you may have to have not an exit because it was an exit. And just from an orientation, a wayfinding perspective, you may need to say not an exit and then you have to put exit. That's a, you know, kind of standard ISL interim life safety measure.
Yeah. So are you saying? So the, so the egress, so the exit egress will be redirected to this door instead of that door? And it's not impeded, understood? Yeah, and it won't be impeded by the exit. And then, just for clarification, it sounded like you were saying that there is a set of stairs over there. Is that right? There's a, there's a stair next to this door.
That's the one.
And that's here?
Yeah.
That's this?
So if you, if you turn this around, yeah, it's this door.
Right.
With that one, the main doors over here.
So what I'm trying to, I get that. What I'm trying to understand is, and maybe I'm dense.
I'm trying to figure it out, too.
So I'm not worried about anything on the exterior. There, you were, as you were explaining it, it sounded like the, there's a set of stairs, but you only have a set of stairs to get from Level A to Level B. So how does that work if you're someone in a wheelchair, for instance? You can enter the stair enclosure from Level 1 and you can exit the stair enclosure from Level 1 without going into the...
To the exterior.
Without going up. You can go right through the stair. Oh, you can go through? You can cut, you can go through.
Without using stairs.
Okay, that's what I didn't understand.
It's a hallway. You're right.
If that means the egress are stairs from above, and, and you couldn't have a person in a wheelchair or, you know, they'd have to go through the elevator, they'd have to have an area of refuge somewhere.
You're right. You can cut on level, on this level, which is technically ground in this building, there's ground Level 1, Level 2, but you can cut through that stairwell in a wheelchair without using, without using the stair. Got it. Thank you. Okay. Sorry for all the interruptions. No, 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 no problem. I wish I could have explained that clearer, but... No, we're good. I think we got it. Yep. So this is what it looks like on the interior. So you can see we're, we're connecting at the building here. It comes out and then over. And that's the lift? This is it with the lift open. Yep. So there's a lift door, lift, with the lift open here and the stairs that come up to the door there for the staff.
And I think an important thing to note here is that the enclosure itself is rigid. It's fixed to the pavement. It also has the, the way it blocks to help with that, and then it's attached to the building as well.
It's not insulated or anything?
No. I don't believe so.
So what, what is the timeframe? When do you expect if it's approved to install it and to, and then to deliver the new premises, the renovated premises? Is it six months? Is it one month? I believe I asked him for six months. Six months? Yeah, six months of construction. Including the demolition period? Or has the demolition already started?
Demolition is not...
No, we can't start demolition until the trailer's in place and they can have patients start using the trailer. Right.
Hey, Mr. Chair, may I ask, the, on the lift, I know you're talking about wheelchair. What about patients in bed? Is that not a necessity if they are not able to be in a wheelchair for using this particular imaging? Has that, has that never been necessary?
Generally not the type of test, testing that we'll be performing in it. That would be if someone is in a, in a stretcher or such, they would have to be able to get into the trailer by the lift.
Okay, so that, even, even in the normal situation where it exists now in the hospital, they would be in a wheelchair going over to the imaging center?
Most often, yes. Yes, most often, yes.
Okay. But, but when they go to the imaging center, when it's sometimes not in the wheelchair and in the bed, do they have, they're then taken off the bed into the, onto the imaging platform, for example? I just want to, I just want, just curious what happens? And if someone's in a bed and they're not able to get off the bed on the chair, so they're brought to the imaging center now and they're just then transferred over to the bed of the imaging platform?
I believe they're transferred to a stretcher and I believe the platform can accommodate a stretcher.
Okay.
We could confirm that, but I believe that's the plan.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sure you guys have thought of everything.
I'm not, I don't know the dimensions of the lift.
Yeah.
It would, it would make sense.
Yep.
Yeah, these lifts are very common, too. We've done MRIs, like the temporary trailer MRIs, they all have these lifts as well. I think it's set up for it.
I think it's like 6x8, so you have enough room for a stretcher and a person to travel with the stretcher.
Okay.
So we could confirm that with the, with the trailer vendor and the radiology director.
Okay, thank you.
I have two questions with both of them.
Okay, and then we'll let them finish and then we can maybe ask for questions after if there's more. Go ahead.
Well, so, but it's based on this. Will the stairs have handrails?
It does, yeah. It's just...
Just not shown in the rendering.
Okay.
Apologies for that.
No, no, that's okay. And then, do patients, patients come out from the hospital, go get their testing and they go back into the hospital?
Yes.
Okay. But if they have to egress, there's a right, you know, there's push bar and everything to get out?
If you go back one, you can probably see it. There's the door there.
Just for egress, will, will it have?
Will it have a push bar hardware on it? I'd have to confirm what type of hardware it would have on it for egress.
Especially if that's going to be locked from the outside, meaning so that the push bar is going to, I'm assuming you're not going to have that open for entry and exit into the hospital?
It would not be open for entry and exit. I think it would be, we'd have to confirm how it's being locked.
Okay. So it looks like there, if you're, then that's also a secondary exit from, that's an emergency exit from the trailer and from anyone on the other side of the double doors inside. And if it does, then we'll have to have the, you know, the, the push bar to break open the lock or to unlock the door.
Yeah, it, the intention is that it would only be used as an exit for people that are in the trailer, right? As an, as a kind of an emergency exit from that.
Your EHS people know this, your, your construction safety EHS should have that information, but that's a requirement.
Curious, so, sorry, Mr. Chair, we'll make it through this. And clearly, the egresses that we have here, that the existing one, the main one going out and egress from the tents being set up, clearly there's pathways to, but I'm curious, Clearly, there's pathways to, but I'm curious, the, the pathway that you're planning to be the egress from the hospital, is that, is that wide enough to accommodate everything that you would normally egress from a hospital, beds, any emergency things in bed or anything like that? As far as that, that door itself, that's wide enough to accommodate? Okay, thank you.
All right, now on, no more questions until you guys are done.
Unless we really have the.
We only have.
It's, it's all easier to answer them while, while the renderings are up anyways.
It's easier.
I will, I will wait. So these are just street views of the, with the temporary imaging trailer in the connector, you know, conceptually showing the landscaping that will be in place. And a view from the other side. Showing the concrete walls removed, um, and then partially, um, along the senior island and partially along the, um, side walls.
So with the trailer gone and the canopy back up?
The final condition of the, yeah, the canopy being put back up and the trailer removed. That's it.
Yep.
Curious, what's the canopy for? I mean, only for, let me phrase it a different way. Let me phrase, I mean, there used to be an emergency room in there, so there used to be a clear need for the canopy. What's the need for the canopy now?
Good question. Um, I, it's been their existing, existing structure.
There's, there's zero. There's zero function of the canopy.
And they want to observe that so they can put a, they can put a trailer there three years from now when they need it.
So there's no way of, if they don't want it, there's no way of removing it?
If they remove it, though, this building is, that's really what allows them to bring that trailer into that space. Because it's, it's too, it does, it, 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 um, it gives them a setback off, off of the, the primary street.
So if you do it, you could never have a temporary trailer there again.
Because Evans noted that the setback is like two point seven feet.
Yeah, setback's twenty feet and the existing canopy comes out to within eight point seven, I think is what we surveyed it at.
Okay.
And as Paul noted that, finance, it hurts me that we have to pay to put it back up.
You could take it down, but you would lose those rights.
But it's finance, you could think of it as strategy.
It is strategy.
So I, um, I have a couple of questions, uh, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues. And this is to kind of tie up some of the comments from loose ends from our town departments. Will there be a generator?
No.
So there is no generator. And, um, uh, we didn't see a lighting plan. No exterior lighting. And then, it's clear, it's clear, it's all attached as effectively one. Is there a sprinkler system?
Um, so Mike Kelly, the, um, facilities director, was hoping to install, um, fire extinguishers. The code requirement is somewhat ambiguous in this regard. So depending on the authority having jurisdiction, the building inspector's decision. If he determined that a sprinkler system was required, then he, he would install a sprinkler system. It would be a dry pipe sprinkler system. He was hoping to install fire extinguishers for this temporary structure. Um, but again, if the building inspector determined that, uh, sprinkler system was required, then that's what he would do.
It's funny, I'm surprised that this didn't, you know, this comment also wasn't brought up by Chief Conroy from the fire department. So, um, I think, and I don't know how significant this is, but it's possible we may have to continue the hearing to get a little more of that information.
Oh, Joe, please, excuse me, Joe Prognak and his.
I know, I'm.
MO basically says that, yes, they need to have it. If the trailer becomes attached to the existing building by means of an enclosure, which it looks like it is, they will need to provide fire sprinkler protection.
So this needs a building permit, right, to put up?
Just make it a condition.
That's what I was gonna ask, is if you could just, yeah, defer to the building, building permit review. It's a, right, it's a life safety item?
It'll be, just make it a condition of.
Yes, exactly.
Does, does the trailer itself and have any type of fire extinguishing system within it?
I don't believe so, but can confirm. I tried to reach out to the vendor representative in anticipation, he'll get back to me.
So here's what I'm gonna recommend, and Lee, I'd like to note this because it'll be a condition. That fire suppression measures, uh, are, are undertaken to the satisfaction of the building department and/or the fire department, you know? And then, uh, my last comment or question was, um, what's to, what's your plan to come into compliance with, uh, you know, the, the full landscaping plan? Previous landscaping plan. And Lee, do you have clarity on?
I think what he was talking about was the hospital's parking lot across, across Chestnut Street. Which came in years ago with a landscaping plan. Um, I think, well, a few years ago, we met with the hospital and we talked about upgrading the landscaping because most of it's died over there. Um, so I think that's.
Chestnut?
Yeah, we, we tried to look this up on our end too and to find anything tied to a decision, I don't think it's a.
Yeah, there was.
I don't think it's a decision that wasn't met.
There is a decision.
Oh, was there actually?
There was a decision, basically, and there was, when that parking lot was put in, there was a landscaping plan that was brought in and it was all, it was landscaped. And now the landscaping is dead, um, a lot of it's dead. And so the hospital had committed to, um, do a revised landscaping plan and, and upgrade it across the street. So I think that's what he's talking about, because it's been a few years since that was talked about, and like, it hasn't moved forward.
We did find the original decision, I think it was nineteen ninety-nine, would have been the parking lot when that was.
There were.
I don't remember the year, but I, that, that was, there was a decision on the parking lot.
He couldn't find the, the more recent one, but.
Yeah.
We, we can get, we can get it for you, probably in our office. But the point, but ultimately, the, I think what we're saying here is that as a, you know, we'll wanna see an updated, uh, landscape plan that the hospital's gonna commit to. And I understand that you're dealing with this on the, on Link, on the Lincoln Street side for this temporary solution. But I think probably, Lee, two birds, one stone, let's clean up the other, you know, landscaping as well. If it's necessary there, like, it's funny, like, I walk my dog all the time up Chestnut Street. And when I'm coming up from McDonald's, I'm not that I was going into McDonald's, I probably, and, you know, but I'll set that aside. But walking from that direction. But coming from that direction, there is beautiful landscaping up towards the emergency. And then you have that parking lot and there's not.
Other side of the road.
The other side of the street.
Oh, the opposite side, that's why I don't notice. Oh, interesting.
Yeah, it's an employee lot over there.
Yes.
So you wouldn't, yeah, you wouldn't notice the stuff on the other side of the street is not hospital and it's just a, like, several businesses, I think, that are just curb and pavement and then it's the, on the hospitals, or the parking lot side, is a small landscape strip that is, that separates the parking from Chestnut Street.
Okay. Yes, exactly, right. And he does talk about the parking lot.
In particular by the staff parking.
So I wasn't sure which was regarded as staff parking, so, from this, so, that's, so we'll clean that up as part of this. Okay, do my colleagues have any other comments or questions?
I'm also.
I'm also, just to.
Okay, is there anyone?
Actually, I'm just saying, just here's heating, is there heating in that, the vestibule there, these people be coming up in wheelchairs? Is there any type of heating in there?
No.
I mean, I would expect it to be incredibly cold sometimes, but.
The hospital's plan right now is not to install any of it.
So, so quickly out in, into the.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna be coming in and out of it, I mean.
The vestibule, those who are sliding to us in the emergency room, the vestibule does have heating in that, adjacent to the opening to that.
And there's HVAC in the trailer, I saw.
Yes, the trailer itself is heated, I mean, people are, yeah, people are coming in and out of the vestibule, I mean, it is protected from, you know, wind and, uh, whatnot. People go from their cars to the building, right, I mean, it's.
So what's the timeline? It, it, it's a six month timeline, actually, it's probably a little bit more than six months, because you have, it sounds like it's six months to do the work in the existing imaging center, right? So you get started by putting in the trailer and setting all that up and then, and then you do the six months of the renovations and then, you know, a week or two to, so we're probably looking at seven months total. What, what, what's your timeline? When do you expect to begin, when do you expect to end?
I'm hoping to begin as soon as we're allowed to begin. As soon as we're allowed to, we've got a three week lead time to get the trailer. And, and as for the, um, the demolition, I'm not in construction, but I don't think it's anticipated to be a long demolition process.
So if we have a decision for the June fourth meeting.
Then they've got a twenty day appeal period.
Exactly.
Well, they can get started at, at their own risk.
Right.
Once we sign the decision.
So by the end of December, it'd be done.
By the end of the year.
That depends whether, that depends what they wanna do about the twenty eight day appeal period.
Yes. Otherwise, it's the end of January, but we're, yeah.
Yeah, as far as the full project is concerned, there'll be, you know, the landscaping will go in in the fall, we may have to come back in the spring to do the, some cleanup if it's a December or January end, so, you know, full project completion would probably be the spring.
Can we stop sharing screen for a second, please? And then I'd like to see Alex, if there's anyone else, there's no one in the room here tonight, it's just us. Is there anyone at home on Zoom that would like to ask a question? It does not look like it, so, um.
Hit your raise hand button if you're, if you do.
Exactly, and then while we just pause to give anyone an opportunity to speak, if there is anyone. Lee, do we have everything else to be able to close the hearing?
Yes.
And, uh, we'll look again, there's no one that looks to be, uh, uh, asking a question from home on Zoom. So, um, unless there's anything else from my colleagues.
I'm gonna be closing here.
We have a motion to close the hearing by Paul, second by already, any discussion, hearing none, I'll come to the vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the motion carries, we close the hearing. And, uh, thank you all for coming in. Uh, I think we've been pretty clear on what you can expect, these are typical ordinary things. Evans, I don't doubt, will review with a fine tooth and a comb. And if he has any other, and if he has any questions, I'm sure he'll be in touch with Lee. And, uh, Lee, are you okay to be able to deliver a decision in?
Yeah, we'll do it in the next planning committee.
Okay.
Is Evans back in time to review the, the decision before I do a fourth meeting?
Not, not positive, I think he's back at some point in May.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe.
That's fine, yeah.
I think it was early May to mid-May, but I'm not positive.
Okay. If you wanna, I'm happy to give a first pass, not a legal review, but.
If you have any questions.
Familiar with our usual light.
Yeah, exactly. And I've seen them too.
If you have any other questions about what anything means and so on in the meantime. Lee and Alex are awesome. Okay? Exactly. Thank you very much, we, you know, we're grateful to have this service and amenity in our town. It serves a, a wide area and, um, you know, we're happy to be able to, you know, do these things to help. Given the work that you guys do. Of course.
I appreciate it.
Very good, thank you all very much, have a good evening. So the next.
Be careful with your compliments on Lee and Alex, we don't have it in the budget.
Well, we just got an extent, you know.
All we need is a reserve by master.
Thanks very much, yes, exactly, which apparently is available to us at any time, I'm sure I noticed.
Remember that.
The, uh, and I, thanks, Justin, thanks, guys. So the second item on our agenda is our dis, uh, decision, um, for an amendment to major project site plan special permit two thousand and one dash zero two by, uh, Phoenitumis Associates Limited, care of the Patrini Corporation, relating to the conversion of approximately eight hundred square feet from general office to medical office use located at the property four sixty-four Hillside Avenue. Um, do my colleagues have any comments or questions about this decision in particular?
I have a comment.
Yes.
In section three point two, in the conditions, the last sentence of that section says, the petition is request to convert approximately eight hundred and fifteen square feet of general office space to medical office space is granted. I think that sentence should come out, they didn't, they didn't ask us to, to approve that, they didn't need to. This is, it's a use as of right, the only reason that they're in front of us is because the conversion required a further parking waiver. And so the only decision we're making is to grant the parking waiver.
Yeah, oh no, you're also, well, I mean, except that the original permit was granted with a certain distribution of space. Based, based, I mean, you're right, both uses were allowed by right, but when the building was done, it was done. The original permit talked about the, the, um, actual distribution of use in the building.
And we do have language about the, the distribution.
Well, he asked, he asked for that, but I'll take the gift.
He asked for that?
He, yeah, his permit was to actually allow an additional eight hundred, that space to be used for medical office.
I mean, it says it right here, and it's saying it right here.
I don't remember that, I just remember his asking for an additional parking waiver.
Would you convert, he asked to convert.
They're asking, yeah, they're asking to convert.
I don't, I don't have his actual application, but the original permit, Paul, was like, it had the total square footage in the building and it talked about how much was gonna be, um, I think initially it was all office. And then over time, they came in and they were gradually converting it. And so the, the subsequent decisions spelled out how much space was gonna be medical, how much space was gonna be office.
And I think that the first sentence of three point two covers that without our granting something that they're allowed to do by right.
Okay.
The, the building shall contain forty-six thousand eight, eight hundred and seventeen, seventeen square, square, oh, that should be square feet, not square foot. Square feet of occupied space, of which thirty-one four ninety-two shall be dedicated to office use and fifteen three twenty-five shall be dedicated to medical dental.
That's fine.
And then I don't think we need a second sentence because.
Well, it, it covers it.
Yeah.
And it's actually, and it's actually in the introduction, because that's how the legal notice was written with that conversion.
So I recommend that we take out that second sentence.
And to change foot to feet.
Yes.
And to change foot to feet.
So, uh, um, Ari, do you have any comments or questions on this? Natasha, do you?
No, I'm just looking at the math, I'm just looking at the math for a second, please.
So, uh, what, can I have a motion, uh, to grant the relief sought?
Yes.
Justin, welcome to the board. This is, this is, uh, this is an important procedural element.
So we have a paragraph here, Justin, that says that the board voted, so I'm gonna read what we're voting. Sure. So I move that we grant an amendment to the major project site plan review special permit number zero one dash zero two. And I'm not gonna go through the dates of all the amendments, I don't think we need to. And that we grant a special permit under section five point one point one point five of the bylaw to waive strict adherence with the requirements of section five point one point two regarding required parking. And section five point one point three, off-street parking requirements, subject to the plan modifications, conditions and limitations in our decision.
We have a motion by Paul, a second by.
Justin.
Justin, any discussion, hearing none, I'll come to the vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, aye, the motion carries unanimously, um.
Now I move that we accept the decision with the two changes that we discussed.
We have a motion by Paul, a second by. Justin, uh, any discussion, hearing none, I'll come to the vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. This brings us to, um, the third item, item on our agenda, which is a continuation of a public hearing for an amendment to major project site plan special permit number two thousand and four dash zero one with the town of Needham's petitioner, related to their plan to replace four existing tennis courts and to install new tennis courts, four new tennis courts at the high school. I saw in our packet, we have a request from town council to continue the hearing to June four. Can I have a motion to continue the hearing to June four? Before we do that, though, we need a time certain. So what's the draft a, agenda for June four?
So for June the fourth, we have a hearing already set for seven o'clock, that's Blue on Highland, they're doing an ex, expansion. So, um, if you think that maybe that could be done in a half hour, we could, we could set this one for seven thirty.
Um, can I borrow your pen, please? Uh, all right, so we'll do that. So the motion is for June four at seven thirty. We have a motion by Ari, a second by Paul, any discussion, hearing none, I'll come to the vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries unanimously. Uh, this brings us to the fourth item on our agenda, which is an A and R plan by Haven Development uh, for a property located at one oh three Lawton Road and one thirty-three South Street. Alex, can you bring this site plan up, please?
Do we have somebody here on that?
There is an attorney and, um, and Field Resources is here, do you want?
Who's, has their hand up?
Paul from Field Resources.
Let's bring Paul up.
I think he was just saying he's here.
Oh, well, let's bring him over.
Let's bring him over, because I have some questions.
Okay, well, maybe I'll bring the attorney over too then?
David Himmelberger, I believe, is an attorney, I'm wondering if he's here on that.
Yeah, he's gonna, hand up, so let's bring him over. Thanks, Ari. You don't have this memorized?
Eighty-three.
Hello, David and Paul.
Good evening.
Good evening, we have the site plan up on our, uh, monitor in the room here, do you wanna walk us through? Is this three lots, is this one lot becoming three lots, is that right?
This is. Paul, go ahead.
It's actually three lots becoming four lots. It is, it is what, what, what originally was one oh three Lawton. And what was remained of one thirty-three South and a lot on South that was previously subdivided, um, being brought back into the mix to then, so that that lot could then tie into Lawton for better access for potential egress as opposed to trying to access with a driveway onto South Street on that curve as, if you're familiar with that area, could be a little hairy.
Yes, especially on my bicycle. There's someone on the table that I could talk to about that?
I don't know.
So, so you have, what did you say? Was one lot becoming four?
It was three becoming four.
Three lots becoming four. So it's Haven on the corner, then plus 206, 205, and 204.
So it's, yeah, 203, 204, 205, and 206 are the new lots. What that used to be is 102 Lawton, which is to the north. A portion of that lot is becoming part of 204, a portion of it's coming part of 203, some of what the former 133 South Street is also the, the extension of that lot as it goes out towards the, you know, the abutters on Needham Dale. Verbally, it's kind of crazy to try and describe it. It would be a little easier with a mouse on that, but...
Are you able to...
Share my screen?
Well, yeah, if you can take over the remote, that would be helpful and...
Let me just...
Otherwise, it looked to me like it was compliant, but I know, Paul, you had some questions.
I just have some technical questions about whether, whether you need to add some, some information to your plan.
With regard?
With regard to the deed references and the plan references. It looks like, it looks like when your client purchased the property from Judson Parker and Helen Peters, you did a, you did an A&R plan with us for that property and you list all the, all of the deed references and the, and the plan references for that property. Then your client purchased the property next door from the Clemens, which you're now adding to this, and all that you did was copy over onto the A&R plan in front of us, the deed references and the plan references that you had on the A&R plan that we approved last December.
I believe, I believe...
So you're not referencing the plan where the, where the Clemen property came from, and you're not, and you're not referencing the A&R plan that we approved in December. And I'm just wondering whether you need to have that for, for future reference by the, by the title examiners when they, when they go to...
Well...
To figure out that they have, that they have good title and they have proper...
I believe, I believe the, the plan indeed that you're looking for is down as opposed to in the reference table on the left. I believe it is down in the, in the table by the title so that when you go to the Registry of Deeds, the reference therein would...
I see.
Because those are, those are our locates.
Different place.
Yeah, they, I will say the registry likes to have the ones that we're actually cutting up, broken out that way.
I apologize. I didn't see that.
Lee, do you have any comments on the A&R plan?
No, it's been reviewed by staff and we're fine with it.
It's compliant.
Yeah, all the lots have the required funders on the way.
I saw that. David, did you have any comments you wanted?
No, just hoping that the board is in agreement, that it is in compliance and is ready to endorse.
I, I don't have a problem. Anyone else? Comments or questions? Then can I have a motion to endorse the A&R plan for the property located at 103 Lawton Road and 133 South Street?
I move that we approve and endorse the A&R plan that has been presented to us tonight.
A motion by Paul, a second by Artie. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. We will sign that tonight, I think. Does it, we have it? We'll sign that tonight. You're endorsed. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Compliment, compliment to the, a compliment to the interface you guys have going now. It's fantastic.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks. Good evening.
Thank you. Channel, that's credit to the Needham Channel for enabling that. Very good. This brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is a request to extend the Bell Lane subdivision tripartite agreement to November 1, 2025. Does anyone have any comments on the agreement?
November 1, 2025? It's really taking them a long time to get this work done.
Well, it's, it's, this is the, no, the subdivision's done.
Yeah.
This is the off-street drainage bond.
Right.
And there's, there was one house lot that was remaining, this now being, where the house is being constructed, so they decided to just kind of close it out all at once. And then that house has to sit there for a season before, so people can determine that there isn't any off-site flooding, so that was the purpose of it.
I don't have any comments on the agreement.
Alex is going to print it out so you can sign them.
Okay.
Updated version.
Can I have a motion to extend the agreement as per our packet?
So moved.
Can I have a second? We have a motion by Paul, a second by Natasha. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries unanimously. This brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is an appointment, our appointment to the Climate Action Committee, which I think has a new charge now. The committee charge is in our packet. Artie and Natasha, you were both the planning board's previous representatives. Which one of you would like to continue to serve? All right. Can I have a motion to nominate and appoint Artie as the planning board's appointee to the Climate Action Committee?
So moved.
We have a motion by Justin, a second by...
Second.
Natasha. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries unanimously. Artie, congratulations and thanks for stepping up.
Is that decision done?
I have it.
Oh, you have it?
She has it.
Okay.
So this brings us to our minutes and... And I do have comments on the March 5 minutes. I've got comments on a few of these, actually. So with respect to the March 5 minutes, a minor change on page three, Alex. Let me know when you're there. I should bring my own pens to these meetings.
You should. Do it again, I'm going to charge you.
Every good lawyer should. Plus the time that I'm using for the pen.
That's right.
Not just the pen. The pen is $4 and it's $10 for the time that I have it. You guys bill out in every 10-minute increments or what?
All right, I'm ready when you are.
Okay, so in the second main paragraph under the report from Planning Director and Board Members, in the middle of the paragraph, it talks about MBTA plural easily. I recommend we strike the word, we strike the plural, strike easily and simply say compliant, so it would read...
Sorry, Mr. Chair, where's the...
I'll tell you one second. Hershey, that would meet the MBTA compliance. That would meet MBTA compliance. You see that?
Yeah.
So Artie, I'm right here. Thanks, Paul. Oh wait, is there a third? I need to sound it three times. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I didn't...
March 5.
I didn't say you can take it back.
Next, please borrow your pen again. I took advantage of our, for granted our friendship. So that's my only change. Anyone else have any comments on the March 5 minutes?
Nope.
Would someone like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of our March 5 meeting as per our packet and amend it tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion by Natasha, a second by Paul. Justin, you probably won't vote on this. You abstain, your abstention is noted for the record. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries unanimously. This brings us to the minutes of the 14th. And I had no comments or questions. Does anyone else have any comments on our March 14th?
I move we accept the minutes of March 14th as presented.
We have a motion by Paul, a second by Natasha.
Yes, second. Sorry, I'm like trying to...
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries unanimously. Justin, look, I got it. Aye, Justin, for the record, is abstained from voting on the minutes of March 14. This brings us to the minutes of March 19. I did have some comments on these. And my comments are on page three. In the paragraph relating to the solar energy systems, we waive the reading of the notice hearing. In the middle, it says that the proposed would expand the definition. I would strike the word proposed and say the bylaw amendment would expand the definition of solar energy systems and their, and their applications, period.
So is the only thing you changed the beginning of that sentence?
Nope. So we strike the proposed and instead I would say the bylaw amendment. So they would say the bylaw amendment, then it continues, would expand the definition of solar, and we're going to take out to reduce any confusion and replace that with energy systems and their applications.
Got it.
And then near, near the bottom of the second, of the next paragraph, for ground-mounted and parking canopy systems.
Bottom of the next paragraph?
Yeah, the second last sentence. Review the dimensional regulations, law coverage, height setbacks for ground-mounted and parking canopy systems. So canopy becomes a Y and then we add the word S. You got that?
Yeah.
Anyone else have any comments on the minutes of March 19?
No.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 19 per our packet and as revised tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion by Natasha, a second by Artie?
Artie.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. I made a mistake on the March 5 minutes. Page one. Is it possible to go back?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. So on page one of the March 5 minutes, let me know when you're there. I didn't put these in my file in the right order. I apologize. So disorganized. Yeah.
Okay, there.
So in the third paragraph under Planning Board Recommendations, in the second sentence it ends regarding the property, the property's management. It should not be plural. It should be Y apostrophe S.
Second, the third paragraph.
So Mr. Block stated that he has given thought to the comments from last week and the public comment, and the public comments, that's the paragraph, and the next sentence starts, he noted that there were a number of comments, questions and comments regarding the property's management.
Oh, yeah. And it's just a matter of the grammar. Got it.
Yeah. Grammar will change.
And then, let me know when you get that, and I got a couple of small ones.
Got it.
Great. Near the end of that paragraph, the sentence starts, he stated there were issues. Do you see that? Let's change issues to questions. And then the last sentence should read, as it does right now, "There will be an increase of 95 cars." I think it should read "at full build-out." For clarity. Comma, and then it continues, "But this is outside the parameters as it relates to a specific development." Because we were focused on the zoning, not questions of the project, which would come up separately during the site plan process. Lastly, at the bottom of page one, last sentence, "Mr. Block feels this is a function of the, not the land, of the site plan process and not a condition of zoning."
Of the site plan process?
Yes.
So take out land and put site plan process.
Yes, please. Lee, do you have any problems with that?
No.
Great. All right. Moving right along, I think this gets us to our summer schedule.
Great.
So with our summer schedule, I want to pull up, I think I might need to. How could I share the screen?
You need to be a panelist. Are you, are you in the Zoom meeting?
Probably not, no.
Um, do you, okay, just one second.
If you just tell me the number, I can probably log in easiest that way.
Oh, I think I have the... The number, the meeting ID number?
Uh, yeah.
880?
880.
4672?
Yes.
5264.
Recording in progress.
Is that better? No feedback? Joining as a panelist? That's fun. All right. Mark, thanks for rolling on the fly with all of this, eh? Bear with me while I pull up. Where is...
I have June 4th and June 18th as our next meetings, and then after that, I don't think I have anything.
Well, you should have some things in the fall, but you don't have anything in the summer.
Right, but in the summer. I have a September 3 planning board meeting.
Yeah, I'm going to need to change some September dates, which I'll talk to when we get there, I guess. Adam, we'll go first and then I can let you know what we have up our sleeve.
Yeah, I'm trying to, we're trying to create a structure because we have to make sure we have this zoning done for the MBTA communities.
Yes, exactly.
And certain timelines associated with that. And so I want to have a meeting in June. I mean, I think it's important that between now and August 1st, before we hear from the state, we, you know, review the zoning that was, that came out of home. We understand that, you know, that there are issues around, I think, 100 West. Maybe we invite them in to have a conversation.
Right.
So I'd like to get that on the calendar, I think, for, and Alex and I were thinking about June 18th, having, inviting the folks in from, us doing a review of the zoning, inviting the folks in from 100 West to have a preliminary conversation about what, what their goals are and so we can discuss, decide if we want to make any adjustments and maybe setting aside July 10th for that purpose. So we get to the point where we, we feel comfortable with the zoning framework as it's been presented to the state, maybe with some modifications based upon our conversations on 100 West, so that when we hear from the state on August 1st, we're just dealing with what the state is recommending or is requiring us to examine, to change, so that we can address that between the beginning of August and when we meet on August the 13th to come up with what will be the proposal that's going to get advertised.
Well, they don't even know about these dates you're throwing out.
I know. We, we've already been like...
You said July 10th, the Wednesday, July 10th?
I'm sorry, Alex, yes. I'm, these are, these are dates, we, Alex and I met with Katie King today to kind of talk about a schedule that would work to get us where we need to.
I have another committee meeting that I can...
But we...
So do you want to start?
I've got planning board, I don't know whether you had given us a preliminary, but I've got a couple of planning board dates in the summer. I've got July 2nd on my calendar.
Nope, definitely.
And I've got July 16th. And I've got July sixteenth on my calendar.
Thank you so much for holding those for us.
And August sixth, I've got August sixth on my calendar.
Really?
I don't have any of these.
Now, you know something, it may be that I may have just put in for every first and, first and third Tuesday. On my.
Calendar.
On my calendar.
We thought we hadn't done anything on this shit.
I don't have anything.
You might have just done an automatic on our normal schedule.
Alex, it says.
I'll let Alex handle this, she's in charge of it.
The June four and June eighteen planning board meetings and so on going forward, it all says C R R, that's the Trail River Room.
Right.
Got it, okay. So I am trying to think. There were some comments that I definitely had about the zoning framework. That I think I made, I want to go back and re-watch that tape before our June meeting. Because, and I definitely want to bring Tim in. Have you spoken to Tim to see when he's available?
No, I just want to find out when you're available and then I'll talk to Tim.
So should we do the summer availability and maybe?
One sec, one sec, before we get there.
Yeah.
I want to, you know, when you, if you reach out to Tim and find out his availability. And then I think, well, Tower does have someone in town as well. And probably could, I mean, he'll know, and then if he wants to, to bring her, that would be helpful. And then I'm trying to remember. I don't want to delay also dealing with Great Plains Avenue from Linden Street to Pickering and Warren. I have some suggestions for that, which could be easy. I don't know if we can do it for October or maybe we do it for.
I think it, honestly, honestly, there's so much for October, I just don't, there is so much for October with this homework. I, I just don't want to, I think, I'd like to stay focused on that. I mean, we are going, we are, we have the zoning to do with that, we are having a traffic study.
So here's the thing.
Guide, design guidelines.
That's true, but Lee, that's going to be the case for the next thirty-six months. We have a lot of stuff to do. And we cannot just say, well, you know.
Well, it's a staffing issue, I mean.
I understand that, but we, A, we've requested and been granted by town meeting eighty thousand dollars to help for some of that. And B, if we need to ask for more support from the reserve fund, I'm, I'll make the appeal, or Natasha, then as chair, she can make the appeal and get additional funding support. But my point is, although I understand that, that MBTA compliance is a big deal and it's going to take a lot of the resource and capacity over the department, I don't want, and I'm not saying that we have to get this other zoning work done in October either. But between that and also between the large house review.
No, I think we should start those things, but I just, I just don't think it's reasonable to think we're going to do zoning on those other things in October.
I understand that. I also said, probably not October and probably May, which I meant the following May, a year from now. But I want to start that process and into the calendar. So I can't remember what the other items were for MBTA compliance.
Well, there's the MBTA communities.
Specifically, was there other recommendations that?
There were other recommendations, a list of recommendations.
Yes, I have that.
But there were also some recommendations that were done through CAPC that we wanted to review also. I think we should make a list and then prioritize, like which ones are the, and what can we actually get done in October and then what for the next, next May? And then figure out who's going to work on what, because I think we're going to have to divide and conquer all of this.
I think that's the best approach.
But I think you're right, there were things that we talked about for CAPC that we were going to move forward and things that we talked about with MBTA communities.
So that sounds, that sounds good. So for MBTA communities, we're looking to go, let's see if I can share my screen now. I think this is the latest record.
Right, and there's the piece that, that Lee and Alex are trying to schedule for the summer because it's all, it's so stressful, the time constraints for all of that. And then there's the additional piece, which is what I think you're bringing on.
Well.
You know, because you know, customarily, I mean, in the summer, we all, we would only meet once in July and once in August, but I think we're going to need to meet more and I just want to get. So there are some dates I think that we identified.
I mean, I can, I can say that. I don't, I prefer not to meet, I can't meet July ninth, I prefer not to meet July tenth. I can say that much. Other dates in July I can meet, although it may, it may have to be later in July, it may have to be Zoom. In June, I have no problem, whatever's going on in June, I have no problem. In August, just to give you mine, in August, I cannot be certainly meet in person the first full week in August. I cannot do that.
How about the thirteenth?
Thirteenth is perfectly fine in August.
It's going to be a challenge for me because I think I pick up my son from camp in Nova Scotia that weekend, I don't know that he'll be back by then.
Are we at the time where we're looking at these?
August the thirteenth.
What were your proposals with Katie?
The dates that we were hoping we could meet were to have one date in July and then for definite and one to be held. And same in August, because we just don't know what is going to be required of home, if it's going to take a whole meeting or not, it's kind of going to depend on what happens with HLC's review. So the dates that we were looking at were July, and I just heard what Ernie said, I'm just going to backtrack because so July tenth, we were thinking of having a meeting and then proposing July twenty-third as a hold. And then we were thinking of August thirteenth as a meeting and another date in August at your whim as a hold.
When is our September meeting scheduled?
September, we need to change.
Who was that?
It was going to be the third.
It was the third and the seventeenth. Now, we would like, this is actually the most important of all the dates, so please be available. Nope, a Thursday for fun, to keep your brains working. Thursday the fifth, it's key to the whole thing. Thursday the fifth, with your seventeenth as your normal meeting and then a hold on the twenty-fourth as an in case.
Why Thursday the fifth is so important?
Because.
Because there are four members of Exchange Club here and there's an Exchange Club meeting at that.
No problem. The reason is that we expect to hear back from HLC on August first. With giving a week to Lee, Katie. August first. Giving a week to Katie and Chris to, and Lee, to review HLC's recommendations, then bring it to you as soon as possible after they've had a reasonable chance to review it.
With a red line if we have to on the zoning, that you'll look at on the thirteenth.
Well, or whenever is possible. Then you all will refer to the select board, who will get together for some kind of meeting for this exact purpose and refer it back to you for us to then have the time we need to notice it in the newspaper. The newspaper comes out on Thursdays. It's a requirement that the notice runs two consecutive weeks, the first of which is fourteen days before the hearing. The newspaper comes out on Thursday, the soon as possible day we could hold this hearing would be a Thursday, which is September fifth.
And we wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity for a continuation of that hearing into September if it's required. And then a week if we had to make adjustments in the zoning because the warrant, we have a deadline for when it has to go into the warrant at the end of the month.
The twenty-first.
That's locked.
Lock it in.
That's locked, the date that the, I, we have to have the document for the printer for the special town meeting is locked, so everything's kind of been worked back from that.
October twenty-one?
Yeah, I'll send you an invite. For town meeting.
So the, I can do the fifth and the seventeenth, the twenty-fourth is tentative, I know this is a hold anyways, but I may be traveling for work at that point.
Okay.
We may need Justin.
So you're saying. So the September fifth.
I can do September fifth, I can do September seventeenth, it's that hold on the twenty-fourth that there's a possibility.
None of us are going to Exchange Club in September. It's a, yeah, it's a hard life.
Lee, by the way, when is the, when is the governor's, there was like a thing about, a notice of when the governor's thing expires for when you can do Zoom, or is that just?
I think it's April twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah, they, they redid it, they.
We extended it, yeah.
So, so you're, you're going to send out invites for all of these?
Well, I want to just be sure that, yes, when we are definitive, so I just want to be, so it sounds like, does September fifth work for everybody? That's a great date. Thank you so much. And September seventeenth was already on our calendar.
Yes, it is.
The hold on the twenty-fourth. It, does anybody else have a conflict?
Could you do Zoom?
September twenty-fourth as a hold.
Oh, it's earlier.
Correct, correct, so seven, it would be four in the afternoon.
Did you say September seventeenth?
Yeah, that's our regular, that's already on the calendar, should be.
I have a September, that's alright.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's a Tuesday, okay, yes, I was thinking of October, I got nervous.
We may not even need the date, I just don't know.
So we're going to hold the twenty-fourth and hope we don't even need it and then we'll just see.
Then are we on the thirteenth, though, that's an important date?
Yeah, so we have to go back to the actual summer. Because I know that's really going to be challenging with vacations and stuff. So do we want to start with July?
I want to just resolve June, sorry.
Oh, June.
June's already in, right?
Yeah.
June fourth and eighteenth are.
Okay, kids, you guys are resolved, I just wanted to confirm, give me two seconds. So June fourth.
And June eighteen.
And June eighteen.
Right, normal news.
And then we're looking at July, go ahead, thank you.
We were proposing the tenth as the meeting and the twenty-third as a hold, but I know that.
I really don't want the tenth as the meeting, July tenth.
Even if you could zoom in?
I, I'm literally traveling that day.
Okay.
Can I make, absolutely make it, if I make them, absolutely have to, yes, but.
Maybe we could do another day that week.
What about the eleventh?
Perfectly fine.
I can do the eleventh, because actually the tenth, I have a, a traffic safety.
Okay.
Okay, Natasha?
I'm fine for the eleventh.
Okay, great.
That's a Wednesday, that?
What, no, Thursday. What about the twenty-third as a hold? If, because I don't know what we're going to have going on in July, but we might need to.
I'm okay on the.
It's my wife's birthday.
Oh, that won't work.
What'd you say? It's my parents' anniversary too. That's true.
Any other?
No, no.
I mean, that week, I, I, like, I can do Monday, I can do Wednesday, Thursday, yeah, I can do the twenty-fourth and the Wednesday, yeah.
Anybody else?
Twenty-fourth work for people.
I can do the twenty-fourth, but I can do the twenty-second.
I can do the.
Monday, the twenty-second, anybody, everybody?
I'll be zooming, but it's fine.
I think that's fine.
It was a hold anyway, wasn't it?
Yep.
So I have, I, I'm a cabin for visiting day, which is, I think the, I think it's the twenty.
Isn't that usually a weekend?
I think it's the twenty-eighth, but, I know, but if I drive, I may be like with my wife, you know, getting lost on the roads in New Hampshire somewhere.
Okay, well, I think we were talking about a week prior on the twenty-second.
Kids away, I want to take advantage.
So I think we were talking about the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, Monday the twenty-second, okay?
Okay, that's great. What about August thirteenth, everybody?
I think that, I think that's a problem for me. Fourteenth, I think, might be easier. Bless you.
So you're picking up your son the weekend before?
Yeah, we, and we'll, I don't know, bless you.
I mean, I can just, I can back out of the meeting.
I can zoom in. So, I, I could zoom, I could zoom in, but if it's going to be like a three hour doozy of a meeting focused on MBTA compliance stuff. I don't know, I'm going to be on the road that week.
It goes to the select in the next week, right?
Yeah, but are you back then?
I, we don't typically know until we're on the road. I'll talk with my wife, like, can we do this, please? Can we save fourteen, hold, and then I'll, you know, I'll see the calendar, bless you. I'll check with my wife at this point, probably tomorrow, and then I'll circle back and let you know if there's a problem, but I think it should.
So you'll let us know in the next day or two?
Yeah, and I should be able to zoom in.
And you're going to send invites on Friday?
Yep, I'm just going to wait to hear from Adam on that one.
But we're talking Wednesday the fourteenth.
That's right, yep. And then, is there, so the other date in August to, to hold for some other need is, I didn't have anything in mind, so.
I am away, I am away the entire week from, from August eighteenth, from August eighteenth that week.
Same, so that's good.
You're on vacation that week too?
Yep.
Oh, where are we going?
That's fun, I love that.
I have to get back to you on that week, on the thirteenth, the same one, so that's.
Okay, so I'll, I'll wait to hear from Adam and Natasha on the fourteenth.
That's a very important week, we have got, we've got to meet that week.
Yeah, I just need to, I need to just confirm a date.
So, so I, I free any day that week, doesn't matter to me.
Thank you.
Whenever people free any day that week, sometimes.
So, I'm getting, I'm getting back to you, Alex, on a date for July.
Thought we handled July.
I thought we were done with July, eleven and twenty-second.
Which one do I have to get back, I'm sorry.
August fourteenth.
August fourteenth.
August fourteenth, I have to get back to you on.
And so, well, Natasha, so what about, just in case we have other business, the August sixth, August twenty-seventh, well, the twenty.
Can't do the weekend, we can't do anything from the fifth and the ninth.
Okay. I guess I could do the twenty-seventh, it's the first.
Although, if it's, if it's just other stuff and already missed a meeting.
Well, I mean, I, I absolutely have to, I can zoom in.
I know, but it's.
If it's just simple stuff, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, exactly, but if it's, if it's, even if it's something that required a four vote.
Yeah.
You know, and we're all, and it, but it's an easy thing, like the hospital kind of thing.
Yep.
Yeah, here, but what do we set another meeting in August, in August four, though?
The second meeting in, the one that we're trying, that you guys are getting back to me on, is the important one. The other one is a hold in case we have other business.
Understood.
So to Adam's point, we've held four member meetings before, it's not the end of the world in August, we've certainly had to do that, so.
Is what it is.
It is what it is, I mean, what are other people's availabilities?
The last week of the twenty-sixth may be a challenge for me, but I think I could probably. I could probably, I could probably zoom in, though. So I think I can make something work. You're out?
I'm around.
You're around?
Yeah.
Okay. So.
I, I can do it, I can do the twenty-seventh.
I can do the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh works for me.
August twenty-seventh for talking.
Not that I'm dying to have it that week, but.
Yeah, it's an if needed.
I'm okay that.
The end of the summer.
I'm okay that week.
True.
Okay, this is great.
I'm not, yeah, I'm probably not okay on Thursday, August twenty-ninth.
Great, we're doing the twenty-seventh. So the one thing is that Adam and Natasha will get back to me, otherwise I'm good, but I know Adam, we can move on to your thing now. Thank you, everybody.
So there used to be a way, and I can't seem to do it on this version, where you can lock this thing, so you, the top bar.
You can lock it, freeze.
You freeze it.
You freeze it.
It's free.
I know, so where is?
Click on the two cells that you want to, out there, and hold down for those, yeah, and then.
There used to be like a bar that you would move over.
Yeah, you just have to freeze it.
Ernie, do you know where the freeze is? I can, we can talk about this at the next meeting, it's fine. It's fine.
And maybe we can do a list from the, from the home recommendations, so we have a complete list to work from.
Go to window. Freeze, okay? Did that do it? Oh, you, you froze it the wrong way. Undo it.
Freeze.
Undo. Oh, you you froze it the wrong way, undo it, undo.
Nope, you did something else. Am I crazy, you saw that, right?
Yeah.
These are the pains that I wanna freeze.
So what we're trying to get to is what things do we care about to move forward, to to also investigate?
Well. Why is this not? Let me just hide this, can you guys see up on the screen here? So that's twenty twenty three. So. Twenty twenty four, so. I don't think there's a need to bring back detached A Ds for the, even in twenty twenty five, I don't think, so wanna agree with that? So, especially when you're dealing with other issues, so, you know, F A R, so this is really where we're talking about. Large House Review.
Talking about reconstituting a large house committee?
Yeah, and I, what I would like to see us do, I'm gonna s- I like to speak to Lee, and I'd like to speak to, uh, Katie. And figure out if it's gonna be a seven person versus a nine person committee, how many did you have, Natasha, you had nine?
For home?
Yeah.
Yeah, nine.
So I, it might be a nine person committee, and I think we, you know, maybe one person from the, uh, planning board, I'm happy to do it. Or two, and one or two from the select board, same from Finco- uh, one from FinCon.
I I think, I think Lee, you had said that we had created, the planning board had created a subcommittee.
The last time, it it, that was, I think it was, we had, I mean, you have a conversation about what the structure ought to be.
Yes, exactly.
Last time we did the large house, it was a subcommittee of the planning board, um, but it, I'm trying to remember that, if it includes.
Regardless of the structure, my point is, looking at the calendar, we're in, we're in May. I'd like us to resolve everything by, and bring to town meeting in October of twenty twenty five. Um, any zoning change, and I would like to have, I'd like to see us, before the end of the summer, strike up the, strike up the committee. And have our first meeting in September, or or October. Maybe November after town meeting, once we've done, uh, MBTA compliance, I haven't figured that out, but.
I think we have to move faster than that, because we promised, you know, town meeting voted that they wanted a report from us. By, by the annual town meeting, so I think we need to report some.
I thought that through, I'm totally satisfied, I I'm not, I don't wanna rush something through.
I know that, I'm not saying we need to have zoning by then, but I'm saying we need to show town meeting.
That we've taken action, I agree.
A lot more progress.
I haven't, I haven't, I haven't, I'm not finished what I'm saying, but ultimately, what I would say at town meeting is, or anyone would say at town meeting. Is by then, we would have had at least two meetings, public community meetings, and, uh, we'd say that, you know, we're, uh. We struck up a committee, the committee's met a couple of times, and, uh, you know, we should, we anticipate in October, coming back with, uh. Uh, you know, with zoning recommendations.
I think the committee has to be more than just a couple of times before May.
May, maybe.
I think we need to have, I think we need to work on the structure of this committee. In the next month, by the end of June, we should have how we wanna structure this committee, so that we can. I know, with what, the committee that we had last time, seven years ago, seven to ten years ago. We had, I believe we had two planning board members, cause I think both, both Gene and, and Liz were on it.
Yep.
Okay, so probably two planning board members, two select board members, one or two developers?
Yeah.
I'll tell you, two planning board members, or designate, but in this case, it was members, one member designated on the select board. One member designated of the design review board, one member designated of historic commission, one member designated of Z B A, it was John Schneider. One member designated of the League of Women Voters, one real estate broker, one developer, one architect, two citizens at large.
And so.
I don't think we need anybody from the historic commission.
So, hold, hold on a second, I know, I know, I know what you're saying, I wanna put a pin in that conversation, cause we'll resolve, we'll resolve in the next. Uh, in the next six weeks or eight weeks, what the composition is, I don't wanna have that, we're not gonna have that conversation now. And then, and then we'll, um, and then we'll map what we're gonna do, but the most important thing. Because there's a lot of ambiguity that we saw from town meeting and on Facebook about this issue that, uh.
May I suggest we don't go to Facebook about this, stay away from Facebook.
My issue is not social media, my issue is, there is, uh, there is confusion on what the goals were. What the promise of the committee was, what the outcomes of the committee were, and it's clear across town, regardless of what forum. Whether it's town meeting, or speaking to individuals, or whatever, uh, or a town meeting, but at that point is clear. I wanna zero focus, laser focus our goals, what we're gonna, you know, what we're gonna talk about, I have, you know, some specific things that I'd like to bring up with the board. So we're very focused in what we're doing, and, uh, and certain other things that we need to study, line up what other. What consultants we need to help us with, uh, with that study, and to schedule that through, and to make sure we have a quote, we know how much it's gonna cost. And if we need to go back to FinCon for more money, we can, we have time to do that, um, so I'd like to schedule that out. Uh, you know, MBTA is gonna, you know, in itself is gonna be a, a significant effort. And personally, I don't wanna do anything that's going to, that's gonna frustrate that process, cause they're both significant housing, housing issues.
The MBTA, we have a statutory.
Yes.
Deadline.
That's a priority.
So that's a priority, but, we're gonna set up a subcommittee.
Or something, yeah.
And the, what I heard, maybe with a little bit of tinkering, from the makeup of the last committee, sounds reasonable to me. But we have to get back to these boards to ask them to designate somebody, and we've gotta find. Somebody in the development community, real estate broker, um, you know. We we could have two planning board members, plus you as a real estate broker, but you know, that might be a little bit much, but still, you know, um. Uh, you know, we, we, we have to, I. No, we don't have to just say we're progressing, we need to show them some tangible progress. We need to show them that we took their concerns very seriously.
Saying otherwise.
No, you, I, I'm hearing a very cursory, I'm hearing from you a very cursory, we're still, we're working on it, we've set up a committee, they're working on it. That's your report to town meeting in May, that's not gonna be enough.
Technically, that's all that's required, you're talking about, you're talking about.
I'm talking about the politics of the issue.
I think probably that we can maybe try to come up with a work program, exactly what the committee's gonna do, and then identify if we need any consulting assistance to help us.
I know we do.
Like, cause for that, which is what we did for home, and then lay out a timeline for when they're gonna happen.
Be ready to talk about this at our July meeting, it's not gonna take us long to talk about this, maybe at twenty minutes or a half hour.
That's fine, that's fine, I'm happy with that.
Maybe Lee and Alex can put together, this is what, what we did last time, this is how long it took, this, you know, just kind of.
We have that already in the report.
Right.
So why don't you send that, I have the report, I'm sure others do, but why don't you send the two thousand seventeen report around, and then, that's a starting point.
Well, yeah, why don't you make a recommendation of, of, of what you think, and then we can have something to start from, rather than inventing it from zero.
Yeah, no, we're renting it from what we did last time, that, that was a great committee that we had last time, they did good work.
I know, but they worked on a different issue.
That's right.
I have some, I I.
Yeah, and you can, well, you can give your opinion of what you think didn't work, and what we should do differently, I'm not saying it, but I mean, if we have a starting point. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, we can say, this is the starting point, these are the things we think work well, these are the things we'd like to revise, right?
Let's go, let's go, say, let's go with that, which is following in similar lines as what Paul is saying.
I mean, it's gonna be different, we have different initiatives, so it'll be a different piece, but we have to start somewhere.
Yes.
Um, I would, I just noted, we didn't have last time someone from FinCon, I think it's important to have someone from FinCon, especially if we're looking at the financial.
The charge of the last one, I'll make some recommendations to you.
I also think we need to, um, look at, especially with stormwater management, um, there's already a consultant that's being hired by this, that committee. There might be some research that we can piggyback on without having to, you know, get another stormwater.
So what I, so on that, uh, I wanna make sure that our efforts are coordinated, cause stormwaters, we can't affect it. But whatever changes they're making, we want them to, I'll, I'll like to have a conversation, who's running that committee, I can't remember.
Kevin Keen.
So I, so I'm gonna have a conversation with Kevin.
Okay.
Uh, to make sure that that's, there's a continuity between our, our boards on that issue, and I have an idea of how. Ultimately, it will affect that, and what impact that may have, that their consultant can look at and study, and report back to us. I'm not dismissing the issue.
We should do this as a group, Adam, because.
I agree, we're, 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 I'm talking about background stuff, to, you know, to prep it up, I have no.
Cause because, I mean, I think, if Lee can set us up, then we can all comment on the makeup of the board, right?
Yep, but this is an issue in particular that I'm well versed in, so.
Then give the football to that committee, and let, let the committee run with it, because we've got other things we need to focus on.
Right.
Well, your staff will be doing the committee work.
Okay, so.
Yeah, and we're doing homes, so just keep that in mind, uh, MBTA is the most important piece.
So I think we, I think we resolved our summer schedule, um, and, uh, for now. Lee, do you have any reports?
No, the only report I had was just to kind of update you on where we were with the MBTA Communities Act in the, in the summer, and the timeline that we've already kind of discussed. And what the goals are, and also to let you know that we, um, we have G P I's now been engaged, and they're doing the traffic work. Which is to basically take the, the model, um, results under the two scenarios, to look at the traffic impacts on major intersections. And, um, I'm probably gonna be, if we're gonna be looking at hiring a, a consultant to assist us in developing design guidelines. Which you guys would ultimately end up adopting, which would, um, describe what the design objectives are for these varying districts.
Design review for?
So the MBTA Communities Act, in the zoning, it basically references, takes you back to a set of design guidelines that are, that are, that the district. What the district goals will be, so we have design guidelines for Chestnut Street District.
Has the Design Review Board looked at this?
We've talked to them about it.
We've looked at it, Mark is working on it, but I, um, I'm thinking that maybe it would be helpful to give them a little bit of assistance, cause you know, it's, it's basically. It's, it's, there's a lot of work, and it's, I think it's a lot to expect of, of.
Do you wanna bring, so, do you wanna, why don't we have a scheduled meeting with the D R V?
But we, but this might be a committee that's working on this, right?
I think we need to, I, um, I'm, I, you know, the, the D R V is very helpful, and I, and I certainly wanna use their expertise. But I think it's a lot to ask of them to prepare the guidelines, that they've written, to, to prepare the documentation that goes along with all of this. So it might be more helpful if we create like a working group, um, that would work with a consultant, that might include representatives from the D R V.
I see, I see.
To help us get it done, so they're not doing the nitty gritty, uh, of preparing all the, all the backup information, we have a consultant that's doing that for us. And so we're using their, um, heads for policy, um, to direct that, so I'm just beginning to think through that, how, what that might look like in terms of a scope. And I can share that with you at the next meeting.
And do you have, uh, did you have that quote from Stan Tech on the parking?
Well, that was an earlier quote, we'd have to get an updated version.
Can you please do that, ask him for that?
Sure.
Uh, cause we wanna put that in the planning schedule as well, um, so. This town meeting was certainly, you know, we definitely had a problem, I mean, the, the elephant in the room was pretty clear, we had a problem. And it's clear that there was, it's clear that there was a conflict, and.
I disagree.
I disagree also.
Disagreement even between Chris Heath and the moderator, as to whether that was a conflict, um, what I understand from Katie.
We may, we may agree or disagree, and those are our own, that's our, hold on a second, please, I'll recognize you in a, in a second, Natasha. It's, it was clear that, at best, it's, it's a gray area, at best, it's a gray area. And I understand, you know, we spoke to Chris Heath, and I understand Chris, uh, that, Arti, that you specifically spoke to Chris as well. We ha- we have to improve our conduct, Natasha's writ, made a comment at our last, at our last meeting. And, um. You know, in, in which she's expressed that she's uncomfortable as a result of her conduct. That's absolutely nothing to do with Natasha, it's my own failure as, as a leader, but it's also all of our own individual failures. And we all have to find a way to respect each other enough, to give each other the time and space. I'm not, I'm not your enemy. And we disagree on issues, Natasha and I, Ja- Arti and I, and Paul and I, disagree on. Uh, on issues, I often disagree with Lee a lot, too, and I do have a tremendous amount of respect. And I wanna build our bridge, and I'm prepared to do whatever it takes to build our bridge, and. There are ways in which I think we have to conduct ourselves much more professionally, with a lot more civility, and kindness, and compassion for each other. So I just asked the board, it looks like Natasha.
This is from Nuari, so I wanted to bring this up, because we kinda fell through the cracks last year, we brought it up in March. And I, it was the select board adopted it, and they asked us to look at it, and we all thought it looked great, but then we just never, we were so busy, we never did anything about it, right? So, one thing that I wanna say is that, we, you know, we talked to Chris Heath about it, you talked to Chris Heath about it. It was written, wasn't it, didn't they know that Arti was presenting?
No.
They didn't know?
Well, yes, they did.
Yes, they did.
Yeah, the town manager's office knew you, what article you were presenting, and they knew which article Arti was presenting in.
But, right.
Okay, so, so my thing is, I'm okay if Michael Feig doesn't agree, but the way that it was handled. Was, I think, really inappropriate, because Chris Heath, who recommended that, I mean, who, who told us that it was okay, never stood up and said. You know, to the rest of town meeting and say, I spoke with the planning board, I thought that it was, in my opinion, not a conflict of interest. And, you know, that is, I respectfully understand that you think differently, but it made us look like we were not prepared. We tried to go around them, and tried to, and that's not fair to Arti, who wasn't even here when we nominated him to talk about it, right? So I feel that if we get ca- town council to counsel us on things, and something goes wrong. We should, he should step up to the plate and say, why, you know, that, that, it was his understanding, and other people's understanding, that it was okay, and that. He understands that, uh, maybe the other group didn't feel the same way.
Phrase this as a question for Mr. Block, because during town meeting, how Arti was presenting. You and Michael Fee and Chris Heath were consulting, are you at liberty to tell us what their conversation was? I'll phrase it that way.
I don't think. I don't, I don't think that I, that there's a confidentiality question, I can say that. Um, the moderator asked some questions, and I, you know, you know, asked some questions about. You know, Arti and the company he works for, and the type of work that he does.
Okay.
I answered those questions.
To the best of your knowledge, I'm not sure that any of us have full knowledge of, you know, any of our businesses.
Uh, correct, and, um, and he brought over. Uh, uh, town council, and there was a discussion about the appearance of a conflict that Justin had raised before. And, um, and there was, and then we, uh, and then the moderator brought over town couns- uh, the town clerk. Uh, who also shared exactly the same point of view of the moderator. Um, and, and then we brought.
Council did, or the clerk?
The, the, the moderator and the town clerk.
Okay.
Shared the same concern.
Okay.
And, uh. At one point, you know, Chris had said to me, why don't I bring this up to him, which I was a bit disappointed about, because I. And, uh, at one point, you know, Chris had said to me, why don't I bring this up to him, which I was a bit disappointed about, because I, uh.
He was here.
He was in the room.
He was in the room, exactly.
We have it documented.
So.
Well, yeah, and Katie told me that, um, this morning, I know her, she said that, that Chris, you know, said, I guess, of that conversation, I, I wasn't there, that, um, that he didn't see a conflict, that, that, that it was so dispersed, that he, he saw, he did not see a conflict.
Chris did say that.
Yeah, that it was so dispersed, it was, it's kind of like, you know, you work in real estate, does that mean that you can't work on the large house committee? So, that, that, that the, that the conflict was so far removed, and so diluted, that it didn't constitute a conflict. That was his opinion, and the moderator disagreed.
So, so on that point that you just raised about me, for instance, on the large house review, if I was a developer.
Well, I'm just saying, that, that was kind of what he was saying, it was kind of like, or Natasha is an architect working on something, it's, it's so removed from really what you're doing, that.
If we were creating a set of architectural.
If it was a project that he was bidding on, that's different, this was just his ex, using his expertise.
Well, we're not, we're not gonna.
Well, Chris Heep, did Chris Heep approve of it?
Okay. My, my, my point was not to go into the conflict of interest law, that's for the lawyers and for other people, but I, I just wanted to raise the, the fact that we have substantial dysfunction among the board, and we all have to do a bit, we, one of our own is, you know, is uncomfortable to be on the board, and that's a failure, not of that member, but a failure of all of us, and we, the rest of us, and we each have to take meaningful responsibility to change our conduct, so Natasha, you wanna pass that around for all of us?
Well, I, well, I thought that this was the best, but yeah, I, I made a copy for everyone.
So, let's all review this.
We already had it from last year, the only thing I did is I changed, um, I changed the, it's a select board, I put planning board.
Great.
To use it as a guide for everyone to review, this is what the select board has, they all signed it, um, and I, again, we should go through it, make sure that we agree with everything that's in here, and make, make markups, whatever it is, and then we can sign it as a group. We looked at it a year ago, and I, and I remembered, and then, um, and then I found it, and, and then, so I think, and then I changed it, but again, it's not perfect, I just changed select to, 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 um.
That's fine, I think that's a great idea.
So, it's a great, and this was based on Nuari, um, that all boards would hopefully adopt it, so maybe this sets standards that, because I think part of it is, if, if we have, you know, something that sets some boundaries for us internally, then, then when something comes up, we can say, so is this aligned with our mission for how we wanna work as a board? Because I think, for me, we have a great group of people here that have great skills, and even if we differ on things, which is great, that's the whole point, we still need to be aligned as a board, and be professional, so that the rest of the town will respect our recommendations, and so.
So, I think this is great, so let's all take a look at it, and be prepared to come back with some comments, uh, um.
Do you have this on the agenda for June fourth?
We can.
And then, uh.
Let's, please have it on the agenda for June fourth.
Thank you very much.
And maybe you can email me the copy you have.
I have, I have a copy for both of you, but I'll email you the word document.
Okay, thank you.
And then, um, this brings us to, uh.
Mr. Chair, before we continue, since my name was brought up, I just wanna comment on two things, that was, that, um, actually, um, I was commenting, Paul might have said this to you and Natasha as well, that in some ways, I think what happened at the town meeting last Wednesday wasn't necessarily a bad thing, because I think we all have to, you know, when we're up there, we all, we all have to look at, what is the perception of anything going on? And what is it best to do? Is it best to have someone back at the table, or is it best to have someone at the, being, being the presenting? What's best to do? And then, and then even what's best to do, you know, without the meeting, throughout the meetings themselves, so, you know, in some ways, would, this, would it have been a better way for it to happen? Sure. But the fact that it happened, so then we take, we always take, when something happens, we take the best out of it that we can, what the best out of it that we can is what we're talking about right now, is what is going on, who does what, make, make damn certain that when we're up at town meeting presenting, that there's no issue whatsoever, as minimum as possible could ever be, um, that way, there's, uh, there's nothing to question, and, um, so I think we have to be very careful about everything that we do, in every aspect of our professions, we have to be careful. And so, it wasn't the worst thing in the world to happen, is I think it, it allows us to step back and say, okay, what do we have to do to make, to make certain that we're better in the future, so that's okay.
Absolutely agree.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, this brings us to, uh, the last item of our agenda, we've received two pieces of correspondence, one by mail, dated April twenty-nine, from Jennifer Leonard Schafstein at Fifteen Abbott, and then also by email dated May nine, from Paula Dickerman, a resident, and also a member of the Needham Housing Coalition, giving notice of their meeting at May twenty, on May twenty-two with the library. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion by Natasha, seconded by Artie, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, the motion carries, we are adjourned. Not even.